Good evening. Time is seven oh four P M. Announced that a forum is present and called the City Council meeting to order. Everyone, please thank you for invitation and the pleasure of leaving us. Dear Lord, thank you for this day. Thank you for bringing us here today to conduct business that will be beneficial for the city of Mainer residents and surrounding areas. I should continue to give us your wisdom, understanding and guidance. I thank you for your grace and mercy. And watch over and keep our families and our friends, our officers on the street, all those that are working to take out our seniors, everyone that's out here, Lord. Thank you for our city staff, council persons. Do as now we pray. Amen. The Lord is with us. United States of America, the children of God, who would just be one nation under God. Alright, may be seated. Public comments may be taken from artists on non-agenda and agenda related items. If you felt a yellow card, you will have a length of time not to exceed five minutes total on all items except for public hearings. Comments made on public hearing items must be made when the item comes before council and not exceed two minutes. No action made or discussion may be taken on, taken by city council during public comments on non agenda items. Alright. We have one public comment, Mr. Rob. Yeah, five minutes.
Is Austin Bachi Lee being recognized this evening?
Yeah, five minutes.
I'll take that as a no. We have a lawsuit about that very thing. Austin Bachi League is a five oh one C three and they're supposed to be treated as a unique entity. And in case you hadn't noticed on your speaker forums, there's a spot there that says if you are representing an organization. Okay, I'm going to raise my lawsuit by a thousand dollars every time you do that. We'll see what the judge says. I'm going to amend my lawsuit. The lawsuit I'm doing for you guys kicking me out of a public park against my will at the Juneteenth event last year. It's going to be a jury trial too, by the way. And now since our times are all cut by two thirds out of your need proficiency, I'm wondering, are you going to like resign, not resign, I'm sorry, but reduce your hours at the school district now that you guys are getting paid? You guys should all reduce your hours working at your other jobs so you can spend more time working on city business. The abysmal Timberman Park master plan was a case in point. My gosh, I can't believe how horrible that was. North was going in the wrong direction. You left out three fifths of the park, spelled the name of the wrong of the park road. So I took it upon myself to do a master parks plan for that space, something worthy of our citizens. I've got a pool there, neighborhood type pool like Elgin, a half size semi pro pro soccer team, or excuse me, soccer field. I have pickleball courts there, parking all over the place, north and south of Ring Road there, including baseball training facility there too, and parking pools, a little splash pad. You know, we have hundreds of thousands of dollars. We just authorized like two hundred million of borrowing. We have eighty million in the bank and we can't even put in a dog run. You guys can't even put in a disc golf course and you call yourself a parks committee? You've done nothing to get us working over there at Benny Fisher Park. You grew up at that park. They can't even open the bathroom. The vandalism was so bad. Okay, so some other items on here naming things. Milgen, you can use the word Milgen for the East Development one if you want. Milgen Park. I'd like to name the Bachi courts after Tom Bolt. Once we, once we finish them out and make them nice like they used to be before you guys ruined them. Then I want to call it the Tom Bolt Bachi Courts because he helped get those in. I'd like to call Maynor Downs Willie Nelson Maynor Downs. So name it after Willie Nelson. I used to play at his restaurant at the country club. That was pretty amazing food spread, I guarantee you. Uh, let's see, what else do we have here before I run out of time? I know our time is so valuable. There are so many people here. It's going to be a long meeting. Okay. Yes, we're going to hear from the guy who did the five K. That was a good event. I liked that, but let's make something like that permanent. Let's make the stakes permanent. Let's have a map on the wall that shows the trails and the distances. Let's show the other trails that are in my parks plan. You know, I did a fifty page parks plan. I had trails all over the city. You guys can't seem to even read it. Anyway, this gentleman sounds like he's interested to do. You know, some of these people, they come for one day and then they're gone. We need things that keep, that have some permanence here. Okay. Alright, one thing is when we're talking about going to the heavy commercial zoning, that's kind of a ruse in a way so that they don't have to come back for a special permit for diesel pumps. Youth Advisory Commission is a great idea. What took so long? Someday we're going to translate this into Spanish. Won't that be an amazing thing for you people, especially that like Spanish? Todos los parques es vacíos. Por qué? All our parks are empty. Why? You know, I know three Hispanic families. If they all got off their tails and voted, they could take this town over in one election. I know like six black families could do the same thing. We got to get the empathy going. I mean, look at this. You know? I saw your booth at Juneteenth. It was empty though. There was nothing. Oh, my pleasure, my pleasure.
Alright. Come on up, Mr. White. We have reports, um, the main community today and five K update. Um, for the record, Benny Elaine Park belongs to the Travis County. So if you have a problem with Travis County, you can win the one that you said we have locked up. Benny Fisher Park, that is actual county property, not ours. Neither is any of that property over there. None of the property over there is ours. It belongs to the county. So I'll just, yes, sir. Okay. Alright, sir, thanks for being here. Alright, good evening, everyone. I'm Derek White with Evolution of Health. Uh, and I would like to start by expressing my gratitude to the city of Maynor as a whole. The support from the residents has been incredibly encouraging and reaffirms my commitment to creating this event in this gray city. Also want to extend my thanks to the city's leadership for including this concept in my organization to the health and wellness plans. So thank you, Mayor Harvey, Mayor Protown, Emily Hill, Mrs. Scott Moore, the council members, Chief Phipps and Ms. Yolandra Santana for your support in so many ways. Uh, this year we had a fantastic turnout and with a few small changes, I believe we can double or even triple the attendance next year. And the city was extremely helpful in promoting the event on social media and covering some of the costs. There are some areas where we can improve as we move forward. I do hope the city sees the value in this partnership. So this year, uh, this is a breakdown of the, uh, the ages for those who attended or registered. Uh, we had a total of ninety people who registered. Uh, the vast majority of the people, the average age was thirty five. Uh, most of the attendees or the people who registered were female, sixty one percent, forty percent men. Uh, registration count out of the ninety, forty four of them are, were from Maynor, uh, which is a good sign. It definitely speaks to, uh, how it was received as a community. Uh, next up is Austin and everyone else kind of trickled in. I'm definitely grateful for those who came up from Kyle, Georgetown and Fort Worth. Uh, let's see. So look at the donation amount in a second. This will go into the sponsorships, but this year we had, I think it was nine hundred and twenty five dollars in donations. Yes, nine hundred and twenty five dollars in donations. Uh, and two of those donations were from one of the sponsors, Black Men's Health Clinic. Extremely grateful for their assistance. And, uh, those people were Tony Ellis and Carl Spencer, a total of six hundred dollars. Uh, the total profit from the registrations was two thousand seven hundred and eight dollars. Donation's nine hundred and twenty five dollars. And it goes into Yolandra's portion of it. So if anyone wants to have any questions from the city side, she can update you on that. So the overall expenses this year, um, as of the reports sent in, I had, uh, have not gotten the invoice from the, uh, the officers yet. So the total, uh, all the expenditures came out to eight thousand seven hundred and, stand corrected, eleven thousand three hundred and eight dollars and thirty cents. Uh, some of those expenses included, uh, the DJ, um, the finisher medals, the bouncy houses, um, the staff fees, officer vehicles, as well as police officers, event shirts, advertisements, videographer and photographer, postcards and face painter. So that is everything from that report. So overall, uh, this is a great event. I've gotten a lot of great feedback from everyone. Um, and I, I do think that moving forward, uh, just an open line of communication, a clear understanding of our, of our roles. Uh, I think this could be a really good event. I can continue going. I do hope that you see the value in this event and continue with it. And, uh, I don't have any requests this year. Uh, all the requests that I asked for last year, uh, you guys were grateful. I'm definitely grateful for you guys, uh, giving those to me. Uh, so we're just appreciating the same thing for next year. Uh, the only change would just be, uh, just open dialogue, just clear understanding because this is a new partnership for me as well as for y'all. And I want to make sure that this goes on and continues. Do you have any questions? Um, council members, any questions?
I had a question about the fire department being there. Was who was in, who was, um, supposed to make sure that happened? Or did we get the contacts to them or the information to them or any information on that?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, the fire department, Travis County E S D number twelve. Uh, we confirmed that they would be there. They reached out to me initially. Um, but, uh, because they were not paid service providers, they were there as in the capacity of community support. Uh, anything that came up would take priority. And that's something that I didn't make clear when we, uh, we were emailing back and forth. So moving forward, I'll have, um, an emergency, I'll have a medical team there specifically for that purpose and not try to get the firefighters to play double duty.
Thank you.
Does that answer your question? Wasn't there a rep or something that day? Yeah, so they were, they were pulled for those things. Other questions?
Derek, I'll just say thank you for working with us. I think it was a pretty good event. Um, and I think there's some details that we got to work out, like some more signage and stuff like that for the future. Um, you know, so we can go back to the drawing, you know, board and, you know, just make it better every year. So thank you so much.
No, I appreciate you. Thanks to the health committee and city staff that, that surround around that project. I mean, it was, it was a great thing last year and, you know, our biggest goal was to, was to keep it going. And we had another window. So I think after about three or four, I don't know what the number is, but I think that's when it's kind of locked in. So yeah, let's keep, let's keep it going. I, I, I had a personal best on the, on the five K, so I was, I was very excited about that. Uh, I made it through two of them, so. I will say one other thing I forgot to include here last year, uh, did not have the kids one K. This year we did include that, uh, with the goal of making sure that all the kids ran for free and they still receive their finisher medals. And so, uh, I received several emails from the parents of those children and they were extremely grateful for that experience. And so I think that's something that we should continue to do moving forward in the future. That's a great way to engage the kids and give them something to look forward to. And, um, yeah. Alright, well, thank you, sir. Thank you. You have a good evening. You too. Alright, move right on consent agenda. All the items, uh, following items on the consent are considered to be self explanatory. By the councilman will be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate, uh, discussion on items unless requested by the mayor or a council member. In which event that will be removed from the city council. The consent agenda is considered separately. Number one consideration discussion, possible action to approve city council minutes, June seventeenth, twenty twenty four, city council special session and June eighteenth, twenty twenty four, city council's special session. Is there a motion on the floor?
Mayor Council, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the consent agenda, approve consent, the consent agenda.
Well, motion on the floor by councilwoman Wallace. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by councilwoman, we have any questions to the motion? Being that on the favor, opposed, motion passes. Our agenda items. Number two, consideration discussion, possible action on a selection of insurance benefits, uh, service providers for employee insurance benefits covering medical, dental, vision, disability and life insurance. Ms. Wallace.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Um, Brett Bowers, our rep from Hub was unable to make it with us tonight. So I'm going to go over the presentation myself. Back on March twentieth, twenty twenty four, the city council approved the partnering with Hub International, a third party consulting firm to issue a request for proposals regarding health benefits for the employees. Um, and let's move on. As you see, um, an RFP was issued and proposals were accepted through May twenty fifth. With the assistance of Hub, the proposals have been thoroughly reviewed and, oh, and an overview of responses is presented. And the providers which staff is recommending is going to be United Healthcare for medical and Renaissance for the supplement, like the additional, the dental, the vision, the like, and the supplemental like. So moving on. So on the first one, we're going to go over how the criteria came out on the percentages. Um, cost was at thirty percent with claims processing, twenty percent, financial stability, another twenty. Claims management reports, that's good, that's a benefit from on my side as HR. So that's still a ten percent, um, integrated systems for being able to log in and log out, um, efficiently, efficiently for open enrollment. That would be like a ten percent communication and references, another five percent. The total vendor response, we reached out to twenty one, six declined to respond and fifteen participated. With that being said, on the top, we're going to start with the easiest, which is basic life. We were looking mostly to match the benefits we have currently. Um, and at this one with the current that we have now, which is what Texas Health, the standard, um, Renaissance came in at eleven percent under, uh, at a savings of three hundred and fifteen dollars and twelve cents. Voluntary life, which is offered to employees at their cost. Pretty much all the benefits would stay the same except for if you see the spouse's guaranteed report issue would be, go from twenty five to fifty percent and it actually stays the same. There's no extra cost. If we move on to look at the vision benefits, they are pretty much, we currently have a visas, a visa sent back. Um, what they're, what they're in, their amount would be this year and it was going up almost forty three percent, which would be an additional cost to the city at forty six hundred. Stay, if we went with Renaissance, um, we would have one extra, a little bit extra on the benefit for frames. Right now we can only get them, uh, every twenty four months where this can get them every twelve months. Um, and it's a three percent cost savings. Dental, currently we have dental with Texas Health. Um, they are proposing to go up another seven percent this year, um, which would be a cost of four, five, four hundred fifty six, four hundred dollars, four thousand five hundred sixty two dollars, sorry. Um, and of course we were proposing to go with Renaissance. It's a twelve percent savings at seven thousand three hundred dollars per year. And here's our big one. Medical. So we reached with all of the fifteen, the top three were going to be, um, actually believe it or not, Texas Health came back and dropped their, um, their cost this, this proposal for a ten and a half percent at a savings of a hundred and thirty five. United Healthcare still came in on top at savings of a hundred and sixty seven thousand at a thirteen percent. And then Baylor Scott and White also was another, um, benefit option with a savings of seven point four percent. Um, with United Healthcare, they give us an eight thousand tech credit, which means they're all the online basis. We can get a link on our website where they'll be able to do all their open enrollment themselves online. They have access to all, both Renaissance and all their, um, benefits online. They don't have to come through HR. They don't have to get a special link. This would be all online for us. Um, medical benefits, the, the changes on it would be pretty much keeping up the same except for there's two nice things. Your, the MOOP would change, the MOOP would drop a thousand dollars and go, a MOOP is a maximum out of pocket. And that would be changed from five thousand to four thousand for individual and changed from ten thousand to eight thousand for family. Another nice one, so the in-network medical, medical health and the office visits would drop with United Healthcare plus any children under nineteen, it's a zero. Um, urgent care is also a little less expensive on the, um, copay. So moving on, looking at the recommendations, going with Renaissance life, which would cover our basic life, voluntary life, dental and vision, the savings would be pretty, pretty extensive. Plus the matching offers would look nice. The nice thing about the vision is the extra frames you can get, the frequency of the frames. Medical, you, um, with United Healthcare would be coming under thirteen percent. The maximum out of pockets change and with a nice eight thousand dollar tech credit. And so the overall savings for the year for the city would be a hundred and seventy four thousand, nine hundred and seventy two dollars and eight cents. There will be a recommendation on the next portion. Um, there is a cost recommendation moving forward with, um, maybe improving the basic life, adding short term disability, long term disability and a reserve fund. Um, and we'll talk about that. Um, the city staff is recommending adding at least the short term disability and then starting a reserve fund.
Alright, any questions, council members?
Tracy, I'm not familiar with Renaissance vision that, that much. With the cost savings and I, and it is good to have the frequency of twelve months versus twenty four on the free allowance. I just usually find that they pick it back up again with the lenses or any copay. Did you get a chance to review that to see if how that?
I did and we have a guarantee for two years, guarantee rate for two years. And they're not, it, it doesn't, the rates cannot change after, until after the two years, we'll have a two year contract.
How does that, uh, reserve fund work?
So that's on the next agenda item.
Take more questions or a motion?
On signing up with through the tech portal, do you feel comfortable with that?
So I still will go back and make sure everybody signed in and, and do it for them. I don't like to tell them that, but to make sure nobody's benefits lapse.
Right, that was my concern if they're not able to get into it or if they have trouble and don't understand.
And don't understand it. And there will be classes on it. So there, then that way we don't have that issue. But I still have the one, you know, we have officers that work midnight, they're off for three days. They don't, you know, we only get two weeks to do it and usually I go in the last day and I do that.
Okay, that's, that was a concern. Thank you.
Mayor, go ahead. Mayor Council like to make a motion that city council select United Healthcare for the medical benefits provider and Renaissance for the dental, vision, disability and life insurance benefits provider and authorize the city manager to negotiate individual service contracts with the consultant selected to bring back for consideration and approval by the city council.
About motion on the floor, uh, by councilwoman Wright. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by councilwoman, we're, is there any questions to the motion?
I have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
I was trying to get my voice together first. Um, currently do we have over seventy five percent of our employees participating in our, in the city?
We do.
So that definitely won't be a problem.
Not at all.
Other questions? Um, all in favor? Opposed, motion passed. Alright. Moving on to number, item number three, consideration discussion, possible action to approve a resolution, authorize creation of an employee benefits trust, designated city manager finance director and the resource director to be trustees of said trust and authorize the trust to purchase various forms or insurance for the benefit of city officers, employees retired, uh, qualified retirees and the dependent.
Alright, so this agenda item, this goes back to the reserve fund. So the reserve fund would be the seventy five thousand dollars with our savings. And we're going to recommend starting a benefits trust where we'll take that seventy five thousand, you, um, follow through with the investment policies of the city and start, leave that somewhere in a, a reserve account to invest where the, the proceeds to it will keep building. And this will give leviation to future premium increases for sure, for, um, future added benefits for the city employees where it doesn't hit the budget. And this also, the budget trustees, um, can be council or staff. We're recommending staff is there in, on deck every day. This also save us that one point seven five percent on the resolution for the state tax that, because they can charge us a premium tax without one.
Yeah.
No. Mm-hmm. Oh, yeah, it's very common. And like I said, if this assists in the future premiums going up or adding benefits, it doesn't, if we can make money on the reserve account sitting there and put that towards more benefits or savings for the city.
I think I'm confused. Who, so who will the trust, who will the trust?
It'll be the city manager, finance director and myself, or the HR director, not myself.
Okay.
I'm sorry, this is very new to me from this perspective. Can you provide a deeper explanation? I'm lost on the word trust. But, but, um, this is a committee or?
It's a reserve fund is what we're, we're proposing, like to have a reserve fund. The, take seventy five thousand from this, the savings and put it in a reserve fund. But on it, we need to do a benefit trust. We want to use this for benefits in the future. And so what we want to do is be able to invest it, where we'll get either higher interest rates to collect more proceeds on the money that's sitting there. So if you do, if we establish the benefits trust, we, it's a little different than just investing. It'll be, it'd be more for the benefits. And like I said, if we're not establishing this and using the money saved to go towards, um, future benefits, they can charge us a one point seven five percent higher interest, um, premiums rate.
What's the lifetime on the trust, Tracy?
Uh, well, so if we decide, it will go with how the money rolls. And then if we decide to go back through like another pool, we can eliminate the trust and put it just back into general is what I understood.
Okay, thank you.
And I would say council, we need to show transparency. We can include in the budget.
Oh, for sure.
It's not some, uh, be part of our, you know, operating budget that we see that out. So, so much interest in this city. See such a process. You ever see that for trust and that fund, basically destroying interest.
On the short term, yeah.
Yeah, I do have one more. For the re- for the people coming up, we have a large pool of soon to be retiree. I mean, what's the, we've got a while before we.
We've got a while before that and that would have to be a whole resolution for it for retiree benefits. That's yeah, that's gotta come back.
Okay, thanks.
Mayor Council like to make a motion that we approve resolution number twenty twenty-four dash nineteen, authorizing the creation of an employee benefits trust. Designating the city manager, finance director and human resources director to be trustees of said trust. And authorizing the trust to purchase various forms of insurance for the benefit of city officers, employees, qualified retirees. And their dependents.
I second.
Second by Councilman Wallace, uh any questions to the motion? I do have. Guess I'm looking for the for the safe zone. In the resolution section. I guess section four, section five, all of that. I'm just wondering what is what is the checks and balances if the trustees report to the trustee.
So. You're looking at the resolution or the actual declaration of trust? So in the case of this trust, the way that it's being set up, correct, you have. Uh employees that are going to be trustees, if the city council would like to have more of checks and balances, there's nothing to prohibit. The city council asking that. Reports be made to the city council, not just at budget time, but at other times when investments are going to be made. Or any action is being taken by the trustees of this trust. For um your checks and balance requirement. The consultants, my understanding and Tracy can uh confirm this, but. Um Irene in our office was the one that worked on this trust, but it's my understanding that the consultant was the one that was. Recommending that the trustees be the employees because they are involved on a day-to-day basis. But there is nothing to prohibit city council from adding any additional provisions or changes to the trust for that checks and balance.
Yeah, and it's it's not about uh current position, it's about future position.
Sure.
Line up some other things.
Right, the dissolution again can happen, but if you'd like for it to come to council before dissolution so that the council can um. Direct to the trust on that, then we can make those changes. We would ask. If you are wanting us to provide some checks and balances and and Tracy, I'm not sure if you're needing to have this approved. Today, or if we can come back and provide some additional checks and balances for council consideration at the next meeting. Okay, so we could um what we could do is also amend it, we can come back with an amendment. Since she's needing it um done today, but we could certainly come back with an amendment to the trust declaration of trust. Rob, can you speak to the compensation? Which section? No, it's my understanding that there is no compensation for the trustees. Just reimbursement. Right, but no, it's just it's just your typical reimbursement, it's my understanding that it's just your typical reimbursement, like if they had to. Travel for a meeting or do eh eh you know meal or something like that, but it's not. Actual reimbursements for duties. I feel better for the language. Sure, so um. Again, one of the things though that's going to happen is because you if you approve this, then it's the trustees that need to come back and make the changes or accept them. So I'm just letting you know that the trustees would need to do that as well because the declaration is you're appointing the trustees. So um the trustees will need to sign the document next time. And again, they would be agreeing to um counsel being um. Providing the checks and balances that y'all are discussing right now. So again, if you have your trust in your finance director, your HR director and your city manager to come back and sign that. Um amended document and I would recommend moving forward.
I don't know if I trust, I'm not just kidding. I trust them, I trust.
Other questions? Alright, uh all in favor? Motion passes, one, two, three, four, one. Declaration, discussion, possible action on resolution, create a youth cap uh vice council establishment. Vice council program approved branding proven by law.
Hi everyone, um we were here last meeting and as directed by council, we brought a resolution with all. The details and um process for adopting. The youth advisor, the main or youth advisory commission into uh the city um requested by councilman. Uh Aaron Moreno. Um I, the resolution is here and it has all the details um. Included but not limited to bylaws, application process, the program, uh comsets. Uh, any other matters related to the youth advisory commission is here, including the selection appointed of the establishment. That will be overseeing the day-to-day duties of the program. Uh do you guys have any questions? That I may be able to answer or any comments?
Um thank you for this, for your hard work. Um I went over this and I think uh a lot of it's pretty good to me, so if council you have any. Uh opinions or input on it, just let us know.
Council members, Veronica Rivera, Assistant City Attorney. Uh one of the things that I do want to point out is there are. I believe two items that y'all do need to decide. One is the branding and the other one is identifying who the liaison will be, so if you are. Inclined to make a motion, if you could include that in your motion.
My question was, who would be that liaison and um and what was the reason of choosing? Eighth grade, fourth grade.
Um the liaison is any city staff that you deem qualified to run these. Um and then these is our standards that TML, uh Testament of Superior League has for this program. Uh when this program established and we're in a better position, we can add on their dancing program a committee. Like a mini committee or they call it subcommittees for younger teens, uh for younger uh students. That they are mainly, uh they call it junior youth advisory commission that runs from four grade all the way to seven grade. Which the older commission uh members can actually mentor these kids to later on. Pass the baton, like you said, the duties to be at the actually commissioners of the commission. Um that's uh basically standards. Uh the junior advisory commission is pretty new. To the TML, uh if I'm not mistaken, the first one that brought it was clean about. Think five years ago, if I'm not mistaken, and it's the only one right now with established junior subcommi- uh committee. But it has to be under uh the youth advisory committee as a subcommittee.
So I guess it may add on to what you're saying. So this one will eventually add a junior. Um youth advisory council and then it will go up to. Where they will have opportunity to go into the, I guess, the regular youth advisory council, is that what you're saying? I'm only asking, we have the same thing in Brian, but it was only juniors and seniors. Or there are some in um some of the other um towns that I saw, and so they were only high school up to a certain level. Um or at a certain age range and then it went up and so I was just wondering because eighth grade seemed to be one of the few. And in some, um I guess in some capacities in schools. It's they're coming from a totally different schedule, a different kind of space and things like that, so they kinda can cause a difference. And maybe even a difference in um thinking and ability to be able to help. And so that's why I was just wondering where that was coming from.
Um it does depend at the end of the day, a city council, what level they want to. I just go with city uh with TML. Minimum standards with A grade. Uh in my personal experience. Uh yes, there was different between mentality and everything, but at the end of the day, it's an opportunity for our older kids. To also mentor kids that are transitioning that middle school to high school and besides. Does a little inconvenience down there, we didn't have any major, actually they all use it as a learning experience and. It create more diversity on the group and we're able to measure different areas of the youth group and as actually represented. At that at the end of the day, if you guys want to make an amendment and change that, uh it's all it's it's on your hands. I just go with the minimal standards of TML.
What are the uh. Voter, education, registration, expectation?
And for our youth?
Yes, like are they just like it's I know the the standard language.
They all their leaderships goes at different levels that include municipality, uh skills and knowledge. Which include voting, uh it will be part of any leadership programs that is through TML. So when we do activities or the or the kids do activities like leadership and training or any development. Activities that we do, uh it will rotate every year what they learn, but everything at the end is included. Uh they will be trained to be full leaders from every aspect of the government uh perspective. They do have a lot of classes and uh suggested programs and training in TML. Uh which in my personal feeling, we did all of them every year uh when I was in clean. Uh so I do expect to see something very similar here, so we can make sure all our kids are. We're creating full leaders with the full knowledge that they have, that they need to be successful in in our city, in our community. And we also take suggestion from city council or any other leaders in the community that hope the kids should be benefited if they learn. Any other skills. TML does it by grade, not by age categories and um kids with different age categories can be on one specific grade. So it will is better to um have them by grades because it will be easier to track. Um that's the main reason they don't do a specific age.
It's not about the grade. Does TMS, does TML also provide like the basic funding to get the program started?
No, that will be within the city, which um as you can see, it will be something that it will impact the city's budget for next fiscal year. Um and if I'm not mistaken, I will have to come back for that. Um usually every city does allocate an amount to run the program. That will include any expenses of the program, including when they go to the TML youth summits. Uh any events or any activities their kids are involved into it.
Other questions? Do we have a list of recommended staff?
Sorry, sir?
Do we have a list of recommended staff for the uh liaison?
Uh we don't, that's up to you guys, whoever you guys want to appoint.
Don't, well, we don't want to appoint, just say appoint someone, they don't want to, that's my man.
I could run it, that's what I was told, if I'm told.
Who here has the most experience in doing this type of thing?
Yellow.
I think I would like to know who has the bandwidth to be able. It does seem like a very, very tasking. Um it does help to have someone that. Has experience with um how knowing how the program should look, but then also having experience. Going to the community and being able to get the program started, um because it seems like it's an August to May um thing. And so being able to get it off the ground really quickly would help as well, be very beneficial. Is it too much to put it out there to see? Because I guess it's not fair to put it all on you automatically. But um I guess to bring it out to the scene and then see who would be interested at all, I guess, don't know. Does it have to be a director or could it be an actual? Or could it be an actual staff member that has a passion for it, but may not know to have that opportunity? It's out there.
Section six and section. Um, eight. Um, contradictory. Looks like this, uh, section is talking about appointing of the commissioners. And then eight, section eight is talking about the. The selection process.
Which.
Is that the application process?
Um, basically when the kids apply to the program is the first step. And then they decide whether or not they want to run to be an actual commissioner, or one of the eight shares of commissioners. Which later on, they will come in front of city, two city council members. The city liaison and the city manager to do a formal interview. And he will have to pass this, you know, a leadership screening, uh. And then the city, though that board, that panel will select whether or not that kid passed for to be a commissioner or not. Uh, it's basically an appointed, com- these commissioner shares are appointed shares by city council. So after they, the city council select their eight, um, they will come here, get story in front of you guys. And there will be the main shares.
That's what I thought, but it required.
For the resolution? Um, if I'm not mistaken, the resolution talks about the liaisons, all the bylaws.
Yes, I, we can clarify that a little bit more if that's needed.
Uh, other than that, uh, I think it's. We have some youth that. At least, definitely during the three years, I've been there, interested in finding out how they can be involved and learn. I think there's definitely a great addition to the things that the city does. I'm here to find out what, what it costs. Uh, not only, uh, financially, uh, which I think it'll be worth, you know, some costs associated with it. Uh, the time, I would say, we might say at some point in time, consider how to have a additional vote. Um, either at the top of thirty staff. Or somewhere, um, to, to help this have the. It's gonna be a lot.
Um, just keep in mind that the commissioner, this commissioner will be run by the.
I just, you know, I got a little experience working with kids, so. Might just love and more. Cause I, when I read what was listed there, I think. Whatever.
This was one of my babies in Killeen F Y I, li- literally this, uh, the youth advisory commissioner in Killeen was. It was, it was my baby, so it's one of the projects that I feel more proud in my entire career.
I think once we get, you know, in anything we start, it's gonna, it'll require a lot of. It's like, I wouldn't pass anything, gotta begin, you can pass it, then just start posting. All, cause we have. It, it could be done, I just don't wanna take anything away from. Big initiative, a lot of time. Overburdened, there's, there's gonna be some. You know, it's just a lot, and I don't wanna say you. Cause that's just one thing we don't wanna see is the it. And our, under our obligation. Parents are not here, not experienced with someone else's duty. Or someone else that is tied to this. Cause there's gonna be some expectations. Here if you do it, I'm twenty-two kids. All short on that. Proceed knowing that there's gonna be some parents that will back. It's a good thing, but I just wanna make sure we don't put too much here. Yeah, cause it's gotta balance.
Well, that's what I'm thinking, that's why I was coming.
Margaret, huh, Margaret, Margaret, Margaret?
She had that tape, that bottom two tape?
Think so.
Yeah, so. Yeah, so I'm not saying her, I'm just saying entities like that, that are service oriented, seeing how. We're not with this part, they all fall under the city staff. I'm hundred percent forward, I just know that y'all get busy. So just, you know, whatever y'all can figure out to, to get additional support, I have weight in my, in my mind, I think will make it work. But I trust that to you all.
I think your input's important in council. They're trying to give us some frameworks, if you don't deal with kids every day. It, it could, it could require us to make sure we. Set it up to succeed. That's important. Council and have guys to try to get other services organizations that wanna be involved. Have, you know, have them establish a track record of working with those.
Yeah, I personally would not mind helping in, in any way possible, so just reach out to me and, yeah, I'm there.
I would be available as well.
And just wanna throw out there, um, that because this is a, a program adopted by T M L. When it comes to kids and adults, unless they're like city staff and city background check, and it's under city's paycheck. They are not allowed to be, you know, uh, do. We can partner, the, the program can partner with other organizations to do events and do volunteer programs and all that. But within both with the, uh, program, day to day, or planning, or working with the kids. It does have to be city staff, city council, under the city.
And I think that's what the council members have, and we just gotta. Framework, how, your time. Follow seven, seven, seventeen, fifteen, sixteen hours a week, or a month, whatever it is, we gotta make sure. Their commitment is not. We don't wanna burn. Anything that can. Us, the staff, we'll make sure. I don't wanna miss a guy. Requires time, schedule. The year gets really busy, has. Have good checks and balances. Commitment to make this program succeed.
Other questions?
Mayor and council, um, I did speak to Yolandra, but Mr. Moore as well. But, um, I think it's interesting, in my position, I did speak just to share this information. Spoken to other cities, other, other city secretaries. Um, it's pretty new, so I've been picking, you know, their brains and see what they think. It is a lot of work, um, I did volunteer to assist if needed. Uh, just cause I wanna know about it, not, you know, it, it's just a new skill for me as well. So I am open to, you know, just to kinda look and see how it's, how the process goes. Especially because they're gonna be working with city council, and that kinda falls under my department. Um, but my recommendation would be to limit the grade. Um, for maybe junior and senior or something to start smacking, that can always be changed later on. Um, the old, it's totally up to you, um, I don't know. But that's would be my recommendation. Just wanted to add that in there.
Other questions?
Um, for me, I would say to, if, if you don't want eighth graders, that's fine, but from freshmen up. I would say to have it there, because what it is, is that your elders are training your youngers to take their spots. So if you just have juniors and seniors, then you're running with a limited pool. And it's not giving the youngers the experience to be able to move up and see the production of their hard work.
There are also other cities that what they do, they limit the grade of commissioners who is holding chairs. But I still allow other lower grade, like eight, nine, ten, to be part of the program. They just cannot run to be commissioners. Commissioners only can run by, you know, ten, eleven grades, that's maybe what Ms. Deja has seen in other, uh, cities. Cause that's, that's something that I have seen before, uh, but again, it's up to you guys, uh, how you wanna limit it.
No, I can agree with that.
We got a good group of different ideas. One. Only what juniors think, only another is, um, junior think, think.
Resource members.
Resource members? Um, well, I think a, a few things, one, you wanna make sure you start your program. Sometimes the young kids, you know, bounce around. We'll take some motions.
Yes, I would just like to say that I like the brand that has our logo with the, the name of it written out. I like that one.
Um, this one?
Yes.
Um, which one of these one do you guys like for the icon? Well, that's, that's not up to me, that's T M L, that is their acronym for it.
So they're just, they're just icons, so I think that first one would be the main one. And then, uh, small, they just a yak, who would be just the icon?
Like we have our M for the main one?
Alright, so, uh, I, I just went through the different iterations of how you can make your motion.
Um, mayor, in our motion, do we also make the suggestion that we'll leave the, um, city appointed person to the city manager?
Mayor council like to make a motion that city council approve resolution number twenty twenty-four dash twenty, creating the mainer youth advisory commission. Establishing the mainer youth advisory commission program, approving branding, approving bylaws, approving an application process, selecting. And. I would say having eleventh through twelfth grade as the commissioners and the lower grades as, um. Resource members and designating the city manager to, um, select the city staff liaison. Providing for related matters. Which branding? Oh, um, the first one, the mainer youth advisory commission, the one spelled out. And then the icon would be with the yak on the side of the mainer yo logo.
We have a motion on it for my council.
My second.
Second, my councilman wants, and the, uh, questions to the motion?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
The way that the motion was read, um, for the members that get a chance to, the other members. Is that just from eighth to twelfth, or was that all grade? Twelve, that could be.
The motion that was currently made was eighth through twelve. Eleventh and twelve. If you wanted all grades, then that would be a friendly amendment or an amendment.
Well, the starting of recruitment can start as early as you guys approve this, um the budget will be. Mister Moore, when we're ready. Um for for budget, uh we were going to put it into the new fiscal year budget. Uh I was planning to start recruiting, um. Um just for basic stuff to kick get out this year. Um when I was there, I started with twenty five thousand and as the years passed by the time I left, it was forty five thousand. About the year of twenty twenty two, when we hosted the Ju- uh um summit, I clean. Uh they got their forty five thousand plus a extra fitting to they be able to host it and. Get all the supplies and all of that, yeah. We were not going to host it yet, don't don't get excited, we were not hosting T M L, uh U T M L yet.
Alright, uh but any other questions?
Thank you.
Mayor, council members Veronica Rivera, Assistant City Attorney. Um the last time that this policy came to you for consideration. Council provided direction to bring it back with um streets being included, the renaming of streets. And so that um policy was revised and placed in backup, however, in reviewing. The backup policy, we did find some minor revisions. And I just wanted to go over that or you have been provided a red line, um the revisions are to. Um article one A. Article three A. And article five B. So again, if you are inclined to uh make a motion, if you could just state in your motion with the. Revisions provided by city legal. And I'm here to answer any question. Exhibit A are finals, yeah, they're, it's just uh summary forms that they would fill out. That would come back to the city. That's the app, those are the applications, it's providing the proposal and significance of the name, impact for the community. Yes, sir. That's city, um city staff would be doing that, or you can assist city staff.
Mayor Council, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the naming policy for city owned property and facilities. In the city of Maynor and authorize the city manager to execute the policy.
With the revised change?
With the re revisions provided.
By city legal.
My second?
Yes, oh, how often? They would just be coming in? It would be public, sir.
As the exhibit A or B, is that what um? When it's open to the public for the public hearing, is this what they would need to have completed first? Or who completes those exhibit? I guess that's what I'm I'm building through that part.
Yes, it would be the individual or organization that's coming to the city wanting to make a change. Or uh or name a facility. So you would like a presentation? Or provide the application with no action, just a discussion and then? Yes. Would you like us to go ahead and include that in the policy, you can make, you can make that as part of your motion?
That's fine with me personally.
Okay, how do I say that friendly amendment to bring it back before council for?
Add to the policy to bring it back before council be uh at a separate meeting before taking action.
Add a presentation, a friendly amendment to add a presentation before. Before the public hearing or any action is taken.
Uh so this is the second and final reading, as it says for the um. The kind of remainder portion in between the Kinzel and the Weir tracks, that was labeled as county right away on some surveys, so we. Have processed this annexation, other right of way annexation, um so it had two public hearings instead of one. Yes, have any questions, happy to answer them?
Mayor Council like to make a motion that we approve the second and final reading of ordinance number seven fifty three. Of the city of Maynor, Texas, annexing one point two twenty two acres. More or less being located in Travis County, Texas and adjacent and contiguous to the city limits. Making findings of fact, providing severability clause and an effective date and providing for open meetings and other related matters.
So this property, um it's pretty much almost the end of the city limits as you're heading towards Elgin. Um it's over there, the old Pentole building now, five F mechanical. Uh it was approved um on first reading for C three um with the recommendation for um. Eleven uses to be removed, which uh some of them were the more industrial uses and then ones that. Weren't necessarily in alignment with the city's goals. Um and those uses, they were the adult oriented business, data center, gas station full service, gas station limited. Light industrial, liquor store, offices warehouse, product development services, research services, truck stopper, travel center and vehicle storage facility. Uh so the ordinance has been updated to include those prohibited uses uh as well as your motion, uh if you're inclined to approve it here on second reading. Uh there are representatives here as well, if you have questions for them.
Mayor Council like to make a motion that we approve the second and final reading of ordinance number seven fifty four, rezoning one lot on four point four seven five acres. More or less and being located at sixteen zero eleven east US highway two ninety, Maynor, Texas from. A agricultural agricultural to C three heavy commercial with the following uses removed. Adult oriented business, uh data center center, light industrial, offices, warehouse. Product development services, research services, truck stop or travel center, vehicle storage facility, gas station. Uh gas station limited and liquor store.
My second.
So there I I remember something about that if we didn't want, like there's an opportunity if they wanted to that a gas station could be put there. And we have to do something special.
No, the way the ordinance uh is written before you, they would prohibit it uh outright, like they couldn't, they'd have to. Come back and amend, like basically do another rezoning to uh amend what's before you. Um C three, um as it's currently written in our code allows gas stations by right. Uh all the other commercial categories require a specific use permit. But with the prior recommendation, uh was to just remove gas stations as allowable. Yeah, there's no plans for any gas, or the intended uses for construction, uh sales. And rental or uh large construction equipment. Yeah, so. Yeah, so the summary form, you know, prior to the the last motion at the last meeting. It it called it out that C three allowed gas stations by right, so that way you were aware that um cuz.
Other questions? No other questions to the motion?
I do, I'm sorry, going forward. Is this a small business? Is going here?
Jeremy Rogers, representing Kimley Horn, I actually have a representative of the company that flew in from Florida tonight for questions. Good evening, my name's Dan, um I work for national equipment dealers, proposed use, um we are a family owned company. Um we're in uh four other states besides Texas, Florida, Georgia, South Carolina and North Carolina. Um this would be our twentieth location, uh dealership. Um so take that as well as 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 a small business, um but we would, uh like I said, we're family owned. Um and this location would uh probably be looking to hire probably around twenty people um for this local branch. Does that answer the question?
No other questions, alright, take a vote, all in favor? All in favor? Uh, all in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Alright.
Yes.
You're welcome. Safe travels.
Thank you.
Second and final reconsideration discussion clause action on a uh submission. Um, especially use permit to commit up to three hundred, three thousand eight hundred and sixty square feet of medical office and medical clinic. Man across block A, lot seventy, uh, one acre more or less and located.
Sure, so this one, um, it is for one of the specific pad sites, um, along two ninety where there's a proposed Chipotle, so it's a. A two tenant building and one half is supposed to be that Chipotle and the other half is where this medical use is being requested. Believe it's proposed to be a dental office. Um, nothing's been filed regarding that. Some of the documents have that included. Um, this is separate from the what was approved for retail connections. They got seventy-five hundred square feet, so this would be like overall for the development additional to that, but just specific to the one lot. Um, but combined, like, the entire development is four hundred and twenty-six thousand square feet of. Commercial use, um, and this, with those two, with this specific use and the prior approved one. Uh, it represents just under three percent of the total allowable area. And so it was also approved on first reading.
Questions, councilman? Uh, can we please pass down to our votes? I, I did some driving. And I was noticing, um, like other economic areas. And they're very intentional about what we're putting there. And one of the things I've noticed is, uh, there's, there's every now and then. Maybe unintentional, this is good for Mainland. And I just wanna make sure that we're in, that our developers, everyone around us is on the same page about building for tomorrow. Uh, because this should be shopping centers or an economic center that have a increasing number, I've seen. Uh, have an increasing number of medical stuff that pops in there, uh, over time territory. And they typically are uh identifiable in communities of color that are in communities of, out of color. So I just wanna make sure that, you know, this is supposed to be our big economic. And, you know, development space, and so, uh, we have now about ten, almost eleven thousand square feet now.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, of medical in that area. It's random, uh, medical things that solve the gender for us. Uh, cause our big, our big agenda push was for regional hospital. And so we're not closing the gas sale. But we are, we did give eleven thousand square feet for, uh, that's not going to sell things. Have property charges, but we're gonna have that regardless of that. So, uh, just wanna keep that in mind. That's why we made some decisions on, on early, a couple of years ago, uh, you know. Major entity that wanted to be, uh, this was, um, a, a big corner. And it has a whole, uh, it has long term financial implications. So, um. We can, uh, me personally, I would like to hope that the last one.
Mm-hmm.
And that as these fade out, that we go back to sales. Uh, so that, that, that's why we did it. That's why we approved the three acres, like we did, because our bullet. Alright, I'm done. Also. Questions, comments? Motion? To the public after the reason why I'm saying that is because we gotta do programs. Now, we can't do programs for the community, all have, 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 um, property tax. We need our sales tax dollars to come and get to the city so we can do a community program. Looking out for our future. So.
I agree with you. I think we need more sales tax.
So that's, that's why we're pushing that because we're money hungry. We are a community, we are a community. Uh, at some point in time, we're gonna wanna do certain things for transportation, that money.
I agree. And with that being said, did council, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the second and final reading of the subdivision of a specific use permit. Up to three thousand eight hundred and sixty square feet of medical office and medical clinic in Maynor Crossing Block A Lot Seven. Being one acre more or less and located at the northwest intersection of FM nine seven three and US highway two ninety, Maynor, Texas.
Motion on for by councilmember Wright, was there a second?
Second.
Second by councilwoman Weir, questions to the motion? Question to the motion? Being none, all in favor? So, motion passes. Alright. Number nine, zoning commissioner. Uh, planning zoning commissioner. That's Celeste?
Celeste.
Celeste. Celeste's ceremony, place number five, if you may. It's pretty self-right.
Yes, so. Mayor Council, I'd like to make a motion that we acknowledge and accept the resignation of planning and zoning commissioner, Celeste's ceremony. Place number five and declare a vacancy.
Motion for by councilwoman Wallace, is there a second?
I second.
Second by councilmember Moreno, any questions to the motion? Question to the motion, being none, all in favor? So, motion passes. City councilor now being into both executive session. Uh, so we're into the position, chapter five, Texas government code, in accordance with authority contained in. Section five five one point zero seven four personnel. Can. Planning zoning commission. Okay. Section five five one point zero seven four personnel. Employment tier. Employee, five five one point zero seven one, and five five point zero seven three test. For legal counsel and delivery for real purchase of property, section five five one point zero seven one, section five code, and section one point.
The half is where this medical use is being requested. Believe it's proposed to be a dental office. Um, nothing's been filed regarding that. Some of the documents have that included. Um, this is separate from the what was approved for retail connections. They got seventy-five hundred square feet, so this would be like overall for the development additional to that, but just specific to the one lot. Um, but combined, like, the entire development is four hundred and twenty-six thousand square feet of. Commercial use, um, and this, with those two, with this specific use and the prior approved one. Uh, it represents just under three percent of the total allowable area. And so it was also approved on first reading.
Questions, councilman? Uh, can we please pass down to our votes? I, I did some driving. And I was noticing, um, like other economic area. And they're very intentional about what we're putting there. And one of the things I've noticed is, uh, there's, there's every now and then. Maybe unintentional, this is good for Mainland. And I just wanna make sure that we're in, that our developers and everyone around us is on the same page about building for tomorrow. Uh, because this should be shopping centers or an economic center that have a increasing number, I've seen. Uh, have an increasing number of medical stuff that pops in there, uh, over time territory. And they typically are uh identifiable in communities of color that are in communities of, out of color. So I just wanna make sure that, you know, this is supposed to be our big economic. And, you know, development space, and so, uh, we have now about ten, almost eleven thousand square feet now.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, of medical in that area. It's random, uh, medical things that solve the gender for us. Uh, cause our big, our big agenda push was for regional hospital. And so we're not closing the gas sale. But we are, we did give eleven thousand square feet for, uh, that's not going to sell things. Have property charges, but we're gonna have that regardless of that. So, uh, just wanna keep that in mind. That's why we made some decisions on, on early, a couple of years ago, uh, you know. Major entity that wanted to be, uh, this was, um, a, a big corner. And it has a whole, uh, it has long term financial implications. So, um. We can, uh, me personally, I would like to hope that the last one.
Mm-hmm.
And that as these fade out, that we go back to sales. Uh, so that, that, that's why we did it. That's why we approved the three acres, like we did, because our bullet. Alright, I'm done. Also. Questions, comments? Motion? White. To the public after the reason why I'm saying that is because we gotta do programs. Now, we can't do programs for the community, all have, 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 um, property tax. We need our sales tax dollars to come and get to the city so we can do a community program. Looking out for our future. So.
I agree with you. I think we need more sales tax.
So that's, that's why we're pushing that because we're money hungry. We are a community, we are a community. Uh, at some point in time, we're gonna wanna do certain things for transportation, that money.
I agree. And with that being said, did council, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the second and final reading of the subdivision of a specific use permit. Up to three thousand eight hundred and sixty square feet of medical office and medical clinic in Maynor Crossing Block A Lot Seven. Being one acre more or less and located at the northwest intersection of FM nine seven three and US highway two ninety, Maynor, Texas.
Motion on for by councilmember Wright, was there a second?
Second.
Second by councilwoman Weir, questions to the motion? Question to the motion? Being none, all in favor? So, motion passes. Alright. Number nine, zoning reservation. Uh, planning zoning commissioner. That's, that's Celeste?
Celeste.
Celeste. Celeste's ceremony, place number five, if you may. It's pretty self-right.
Yes, so. Mayor Council, I'd like to make a motion that we acknowledge and accept the resignation of planning and zoning commissioner, Celeste's ceremony. Place number five and declare a vacancy.
Motion for by councilwoman Wallace, is there a second?
I second.
Second by councilmember Moreno, any questions to the motion? Question to the motion, being none, all in favor? So, motion passes. City councilor now being into both executive session. Uh, so we're into the position, chapter five, Texas government code, in accordance with authority contained in. Section five five one point zero seven four personnel. Planning zoning commission. Section five five one point zero seven four personnel. Employment tier. Employee, five five one point zero seven one, and five five point zero seven three test. For legal counsel and delivery for real purchase of property, section five five one point zero seven one, section five code, and section one point. City council will renowned reconvene into open session for resort to the provisions of chapter five five one Texas government code. Take action if any on items discussed in both session. Consider, um, routine consideration discussion clause action on the appointment of commissioners, planning zoning commission. Uh, for, uh, unexpired terms. Do we have a motion? And just remember, we have. Uh, two spots. Once again, we have two spots to fill on, um, for planning and zoning. Now, we entertain motion or question, if you have a question about it.
Mayor Council, I'd like to make a motion that we appoint. What's her name, Gabrielle? O- Orion and Jeffrey. What's his name? Oh, Lord. Okay. Okay, well, yeah, just trying to. Okay, here we go. Alright, that's number five. What number?
Gabrielle for place three.
Uh, Gabrielle, oh, Orion, Orion for place three and Jeffrey, what's his name? Oh, what's your last name, you said? Stenzlin, uh, for place number five and Gabriel Neela for alternate number one. Un- uh, to fill unexpired terms.
Well, motion on for by councilwoman Wallace, is there a second?
Second.
Well, second by councilwoman Weir, is any, uh, questions to the motion?
I have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, for the alternate, is, is it going to be automatically alternate place one or place two? One expires on January twenty twenty-five and the other on twenty twenty-six. Doesn't matter?
He was staying in his current spot. Is it in your folder? No.
So to answer the question, um, mayor council members, Veronica Rivera, Assistant City Attorney. Is, yes, you would have to designate which place and it would be, um, for Gabrielle's place. So it would be for alternate number two? Gabrielle? Gabrielle?
He just stays in one.
He would just stay in one. Um, but do we have to declare a vacancy for, uh, alternate number two?
You would be filling alternate number two. That's the only part of your motion that you need to make.
Keeping Gabriel as an alternate.
They stay in the same position. Apologies. Yes.
Alright, we have a motion on the floor. Uh, any other questions to the motion? Being that all in favor? Oppose, motion passes. Move right and left, aisle number, uh, eleven. Consideration. Consideration, discussion, possible action on the resolution, request the complete proportion of extraterritorial jurisdiction of the city of Austin, Texas, consisting of eight hundred fifty-five point zero five five minutes to the extraterritorial district, uh, to the of Maynor, Texas. Is there a motion on the floor?
Mayor Council like to make a motion that we approve resolution number twenty twenty-four dash twenty-one. Requesting the release of a portion of the extraterritorial jurisdiction of the city of Austin, Texas, consisting of a hundred and fifty-five point zero fifty acre tract. More or less to the extraterritorial jurisdiction of the city of Maynor, Texas.
Motion on for by councilman Moreno, is there a second?
I second.
Second by councilwoman Wallace, any questions to the motion? Being that all in favor? Oppose, motion passes. For our consideration, discussion, possible action on the resolution, find for approval of the letter. For the, for the, for the management, the letter agreement and provide for a date. Is there a motion on the floor?
And council like to make a motion that we approve resolution number twenty twenty-four dash twenty-two. Approving the letter of agreement with Fletcher, Farley, Shippman, and Salinas LLP for litigation services. Authorizing the city manager to execute the letter agreement and providing for related matters.
Motion on for by councilman Moreno, is there a second?
Second.
Second by councilwoman Weir, any questions to the motion? Being that all in favor? Oppose, motion passes. Meeting is adjourned eleven oh one.